I call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 29th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, no, there are not.
Is there any input on the, from the audience on tonight's agenda, on items that are not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move forward to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes three items this evening: the approval of the February 22nd, 2022, regular meeting minutes, a request by D.R. Horton for a final plat approval of Caromore Crossing, Third Edition, and a request by KJ Walk Incorporated for a final plat approval of Rosewood Commons. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Anthony, did you have a change on the one item for the consent agenda that you wanted to call out? On the trees?
Yes, Madam Chair. Steph will be updating the recommendation for Rosewood Commons to update the landscape plan. Currently, it shows Colorado Bruce, Blue Spruce as a species of tree on there, and that should be changed out to a different species.
Just a note on that one, on us, item staff will update following our meeting. Are there any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Still moved, Madam Chair.
It has, is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Schmuzek, and I believe seconded by Commissioner Reed? Okay, I missed those two here, sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On the consent agenda, two of those items, the request by D.R. Horton and the request by KJ Walk, will move forward to the City Council meeting. They are tentatively scheduled to go to City Council on April 19th. The next item on our agenda this evening is our public hearing section. The first item we will hear on public hearing section is a request by Al Madina Association for a conditional use permit for a place of worship in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, and I will turn that over to Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This request is to convert garage on an existing residential property to an assembly space as a place of worship within the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. Places of worship are listed as conditional uses in the R1 zoning district, subject to the standard conditions that must be met for all conditional uses, as well as one specific one based on the site in relation to a residential, or a collector, or arterial street. So just a brief summary, as I said, places of worship are conditional uses in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, and the applicant is proposing to convert an existing garage. No new structures are being proposed on the site. If new structures were to be proposed, they would go through a much more robust site plan review, looking at setbacks, building materials, heights, things like that. The applicant is proposing a parking area on this, on the site to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance with regards to off-street parking. The site itself is located just south and west of the intersection of Bacardi Avenue and Bonheur Path West. To the east is Meadows Park, and directly south of the site is a city water tower, as well as further south, Fire Station 2. To the west is a large lot, single-family home, and to the north is a building property management company called Parkway Services. Just zooming in a little bit to provide a little clearer context of the site and its surroundings, you can see to the right here, as I mentioned, is Meadows Park and the city property to the south. The site itself is pretty wooded, mostly in the southern portion of the site, a part of a, kind of a forested area that it shares with the property to the west. Even further zooming in, you can see the current layout. The garage that would be converted to the assembly space is located central to the site. It's accessed from a driveway off of Bonheur Path West. Additional parking will be located south into the east of the garage. I have a site plan to show that here in the future slides coming up. Just to give you an idea of the size of the garage and the space itself, these are pretty preliminary plans. They haven't gone through a full building permit review, but this, basically taking a garage, removing the garage doors and converting those to walls so that it's an actual interior space there. Staff has been speaking with the building department regarding this request. There are some pretty hefty requirements for converting a space such as a garage into an assembly use. Those requirements and those conditions would be required to be met, and the applicant would have to receive all necessary building permits in order for the conditional use permit to be valid. In addition to that, the site is currently provided with city sewer and water, although currently served by private well and septic. The property would need to be tied into the city sewer and water since it's been over 10 years since those services have been provided to the site. The site plan here, you can see proposed parking for an additional 20 in addition to the existing eight to the west, kind of closer to the street here, this area. The parking is located about 70 feet from the east side yard setback, and then 240 feet from the southern rear property boundary. The parking requirement for places of worship is one parking stall per three seats in the largest assembly area. That would be a, the applicant is showing 27 stalls, which is actually one stall per 2.4 seats. So actually in excess of what the city code requires for that. As I said, it, there are a number of conditions that must be met. I'm not going to go through each of them. Basically, they're related to impacts on neighboring, neighboring properties, harmonious with the city code and comprehensive plan, as well as some noises and sound and things like that. It does meet all of those conditions, and the specific condition within the code for such a use within the R1 zoning district is that it is located, has direct access, or is located on a street within 500 feet of arterial or collector street, which, being on Bonheur Path, it does meet that condition. So with that being said, staff is recommending some conditions of approval that are listed in the staff report that was provided to the commission. Number one being that the applicant shall apply for and receive all required building permits. That would require, the change in use would require compliance with a number of standards in the state building code, state fire code, energy, plumbing, electrical, accessibility. Those would have to be maintained or met. The big thing to note is, from a zoning standpoint, basically what happens in the interior of the building is handled through our building permit review process. In addition to that, the site shall be connected to municipal sewer and water. Service was provided to the site in 2007. The city code does call for connecting within 10 years once services are provided. It's not always something that we go out and enforce with a heavy hand unless there are issues related to the functionality of this private septic system. In this case, the septic system has received notice that it is, it is failing, so it will need to be connected to city sewer and water. Those connections are provided along the east side of the property. And then lastly, the driveway needs to be widened to 20 feet to allow for fire and emergency apparatus, and a turnaround area will be required, so an update to the site plan would be in the addition of a turnaround, whether it be a hammerhead or some sort of circular movement within the site. So staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to the conditions that I just highlighted above. If the applicant determines that a new structure would be required because the requirements to meet the code for those improvements into that change of use are too high, that would obviously come before the Planning Commission through a site plan review process or an update or amendment to the conditional use permit to ensure that that new structure does meet all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So with that, I can take any questions. I think the applicant is present for anything I'm not able to answer.
Thank you, Anthony. Just a couple clarifying questions to start us off. If they don't receive the building permits, then the conditional use permit would be null and void and would have to come back forward again if there was new changes.
Right, I mean, it would be, they couldn't, the use couldn't occur on that site until the building permits and things like that are approved. So there isn't like a timeframe on that, but...
But if another applicant wanted to do it, they can't take this conditional use pending approval and do it, or could they?
They could submit building permits and do it that way. No, conditional use permits are run with the, run with the land so long as all the conditions are met or remain the same. So a new building would require a new conditional use permit because obviously the existing conditions on the site would be different, or, you know, any changes that are significant enough to require expansion or something like that.
But for the same use?
Yeah.
For a place of worship?
Right, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff?
I have a couple questions. Excuse me, but I'm not sure if they're for you or for the applicant. So you mentioned that this current septic system is failing, and they have up to 10 years. With that in mind, would it be needing to be replaced sooner?
Yeah, yep. The 10 years is actually, the code requires 10 years from the time services are actually provided to a site. So the previous owner never connected. It would have been in 2017 that they would have had to. The applicant has indicated that they are, they are aware of this requirement and are planning on connecting to the city services.
The other question was just more like hours and capacity of this place of worship.
So I think I would rather defer to the applicant about what their intended use is in the space, but the site itself, based on the square footage, has a capacity of 65 people. I think their use would be fewer people, but that being said, we have to kind of go with what the building could hold because, as the chair said, the conditional use permit would run with the property. So just because maybe they're only using 20 people, or having 20 people in there, they still have to provide the parking for 65 people because that's how many they could fit.
Any other questions for staff on this item?
Just one, I actually started touching on it. In terms of overflow parking, so it's like it's 27 spaces or something, if they, if they, 65 occupancy, and sometimes people drive by themselves, right?
Sure.
So how, how would they handle overflow parking?
Well, it would have to be handled, you know, wherever there's parking elsewhere on the streets or something like that. Our zoning ordinance doesn't really consider overflow parking as far as what's required. You know, the three, three parking, or three parking, one parking stall per three seats is what the code requires, and that's generally to cover any anticipated use.
Would they be able to park on their grass further back, or what?
Technically not, you know, but I know people do, do that sometimes. I think it'd be a...
In Bonheur, there's no parking on Bonheur, so it'd have to be on a nearby residential street?
Yeah, they'd have to find something else onsite. That being said, you know, I, I can only speak to what the zoning ordinance requires, you know?
Thanks, Anthony.
Any other questions for staff?
I just had a, had a couple. In regards to the parking, will any additional screening need to be added to the site?
So the site's pretty wooded, and the requirement of screening needs to be provided by spacing and setbacks and things like that.
I was thinking more on the, the park side, where the trails?
So there's a lot of trees. Steph thought that, you know, 70 feet setback is quite a bit. Any additional screening would be in the form of shrubbery along the edges of the parking lot?
Would it be required to be hard-surface asphalt, or?
Yeah, yep.
Then just one other question, it may be more for the applicant, but the use of the building, you know, bringing it up to code, but I didn't see the health department listed, and a lot of churches have either serving kitchens or, or actual cooking kitchens. Do you know if?
You know, if they were going to be putting something in like that would add that other layer of review for that. We don't typically review the health department requirements, but just the building permit requirements. And the, the, the condition is, you know, reply, apply for and receive all required building permits, that's kind of catch-all for those. I think the bigger thing is going to be is the plumbing and the energy efficiency requirements.
Fire protection.
Yeah, accessibility things, too.
I think Marlo brought up a good point on the, I know we've had, and I can't remember exactly where it all applies, but in some of our code, we have some ordinances around the opacity of parking, and it does, it is adjacent there to the trail system of the park, and it doesn't look like there's much for tree coverage between the trail and this. So is there a need to put some landscaping in there?
Steph didn't feel like it was necessary just based on its internal location within the site? You know, usually we have parking that's within 10 feet of the parcel boundaries, so it's 70 feet.
And the park and, did Park and Recs review this? Like, they don't, they're not concerned with that?
They, yeah, they reviewed it, but they didn't provide it.
Okay, okay. That's good enough for me. Any other comments or questions for staff? Thank you, Anthony. This item is a public hearing item, and so at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item may do so at this time, stating their name and address for the record, and coming to the podium and stating your name and address for the record. So at this time, I will open up the public hearing.
Kalia Leschi, 13548 Birchwood Avenue. Our primary concern would be the traffic and overflow parking that could likely occur on Birchwood. As most of you are aware, we've fought a traffic issue on Birchwood for a long time, and would ask that you consider what the ramifications or the result would be if we find an ongoing parking or overflow traffic issue related to Birchwood. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item at this time? Anthony, you did say the applicant was here, correct?
Yeah, did you want to speak?
Yeah, if the applicant could come forward, we did have some questions on the hours and the use, and kind of what the plan would be for overflow parking. So at least if you could come forward and address those things, we would appreciate it.
Good evening, Mohamed Shazad, address 14250 Aylesbury Court, Rosemont.
Thank you.
Okay, on the parking, most of the use would be on Friday, early afternoon, that would be the most weeks, and that's generally the time when there's hardly anything going on in Rosemont. So we, with very few member at this time for Al Madina Association, we don't really expect that we'll go overflow on Friday afternoons.
Okay.
That might be once-in-a-year kind of event. There is a potential, but there's really such a low event that we haven't planned anything for that, but for weekly, early Friday afternoon, we don't really expect going over through at this time. If we ever go overflow, sorry, we can definitely cut our services into two sessions in a Friday afternoon, let's say one, 1 o'clock, one, 2 o'clock. So we have that option if it ever get into that situation, but we don't expect, this is almost four-acre lot, there's a lot of potential to add parking if needed.
Okay, and so you could add parking if needed, I think you just said. So the residents' concern on, on getting cars parking on Birchwood, which they have had concerns with traffic and, and such, if your, if your members were parking there, you could address it and have them not park on Birchwood, then?
Absolutely. I mean, we, the, looking at the size of this lot, and I don't know exactly where the, that particular street is, there's no street that we can just park and walk to this lot.
Right, it's not super close, yep.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question, too, as far as the hours, days per week, because some houses of worship obviously sometimes meet more than once a week. Is it just one Friday afternoon a week?
That is the, when there'll be the, almost all the members of the association would be coming, but there'll maybe almost every day in the afternoon, mostly when we are back from work. Most of us work in Bloomington and Minneapolis and whatnot, so in the early afternoon, like 6 o'clock, there'll be maybe five people show up there. So most of the time, our capacity use would be like a normal home, really, other than the Friday afternoons.
Thanks. Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
I'm there if more question comes up. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved, sure.
Is there a second? Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Schmuzek and seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed on this item. Any last comments or questions from the commission before we move forward?
Just one, one clarifying question to Anthony or Adam. If there, if there, if, and I appreciate the applicant being flexible and talking about options for handling the overflow. If you're a resident of Birchwood and you thought there was an issue, how would you expect them to deal with that issue?
Certainly, reach out to city staff directly, either in the community development department, myself, or Adam, or our engineering department. I think the Birchwood neighborhood is pretty familiar with the traffic safety committee and some of our engineering staff as well, but, yeah, directly, you know, reach out to us or the applicant. I mean, we always encourage people, you know, to converse with their neighbors.
Great point. Thanks.
Any other comments on this item? We have a motion before us to recommend the City Council approve a conditional use permit for a place of worship at 2058 Bonheur Path West, subject to the conditions A through D as listed in the staff report. Is there a second?
Second.
It's, is that you, Hubert? Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Kenninger and seconded by Commissioner Huber. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This item does go before the City Council before it is finalized. It will go before City Council tentatively on April 19th. The next item on our public hearing agenda this evening is a request by Builders Group LLC for the approval of a planned unit development, master development plan with rezoning and preliminary and final plats for Bray Hill. And Anthony, I will turn that over to you as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bear with me because this is actually Julia Hogan's item she reviewed. She is out of the office for a few weeks recovering from a knee surgery. So as you said, this is a request for a preliminary plat, planned unit development, master development plan with rezoning, and a final plat. This subject parcel is located in the southeast quadrant of Bonheur and Akron Avenue. It's a remnant parcel that was platted with Greystone 3 in the south and east of this site. The applicant is proposing to construct 49 single-family homes within there, within the 7.5-acre parcel. The density for that is 2.93 units per acre. The request is to rezone it to R2 due to the fact that it slightly exceeds the R1 zoning district standard for 2.5 units per acre maximum density. Just to give you a little bit more context here, and you can get your bearings, County Road 42 is near the southern, most bottom portion of the, the image here, and then Bonheur Path. You can see the subject parcel is highlighted in red there. It is adjacent to the railroad and separated to, from Greystone Park. Current zoning is ag. It is designated for a single-family home, low-density residential within the city's comprehensive plan. Within that land use designation, it does allow for some R2 zoning. Typically, the R2 zoning is used for twin homes. Staff felt just because it was going above that 2.5 units per acre, that it'd be a better fit for the R2 zoning district. The standards, the lot standards are pretty consistent with some of our smaller lot developments and planned unit developments that have been approved recently, and in the next few slides, I'll show you a comparison of those standards. The overall site plan shows two accesses coming off of Bonheur Path to the north. Originally, the applicant had proposed doing one access from Akron Avenue and then one access from Bonheur Path to provide a little more circular traffic movement in there. After working with the county and sharing the site plan with them, they asked that the two access points be moved to Bonheur Path just to meet their access spacing requirements. With the railroad to the south of the site and the intersection with Bonheur Path at Akron, the, it was just too tight for the county's standards for their spacing requirements. So here's the overall plan for the site. It does show sidewalks along at least one side of each street, as well as a trail connection from internal to the site over to the trail that's running along Akron Avenue. The eastern portion of the site is comprised of a stormwater retention pond, as well as an outlot that will contain a future city wellhouse, the timing of that TBD. The applicant is requesting some deviations from the code. These are consistent with other developments that were recently approved. Most recently was Tallamore Farms, which was going to be called Dunmore Farms. It was kind of informally referred to as the Bestor Property, that contained a small lot, single-family section. The smallest lot size there was 5,800 square feet, the narrowest being 45 feet wide. Otherwise, the front and rear setbacks were pretty consistent. The applicant is asking for a five-foot setback for this development to accommodate the number of lots on the site. An additional similar development would have been the portion of Caromore Crossing that's in the southeast part of that development. That's the, what they call their Freedom Homes. It's a smaller lot, almost detached townhome product. Their lot width at 55 feet is pretty consistent with the Bray Hill one, although their lots are a little bit larger. So that's just providing a little bit of a context to the developer's request for these lot standards. The city is not looking to acquire parkland as part of this development, and therefore the Park and Recreation Department is recommending cash in lieu of land dedication for that. The applicant's landscape plan shows a total of 134 trees. 56 trees are required, which would be 49 for each interior lot, and additional seven for the corner lots, which get two trees. The applicant's plan shows 78 buffer and screening trees. Those are mostly located along Akron Avenue, Bonheur Path, and then again down along the railroad. Also want to note that the applicant's showing a decorative fence along the railroad to kind of help create some separation between there in case kids kind of get out of hand. Just, I mentioned stormwater. The stormwater pond to the east will be handling the, the stormwater management of the site. City sewer and water will be coming from stubs that are already existing within Akron Avenue. There's three recommended actions before you tonight related to this request. The first, to approve the preliminary plat, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Motion to recommend the City Council approve a planned unit development, master development plan, with the deviations that are listed in the staff report, as well as a rezoning from agricultural to moderate-density residential. And then lastly, a motion to recommend City Council approve the final plat for Bray Hill. The applicant is intending to plat this and develop this as a single phase. So with that, I can take any questions the commission may have. Otherwise, the applicant is present, and I can defer to him, them for any others.
Anthony, can you go back to the screen that shows the, the lot widths and the, you know, what, okay, thank you, I just wanted, have we, the five-foot setback, side yard setbacks, have we done those to that level before?
It's unusual in the most recent developments. I know in Evermore, there are some detached townhomes that do have those five-foot setbacks.
I know you've done the seven and a half, it just, we continue to compress it more and more. But do you, in your opinion, and in what you see in neighboring communities, that, is that?
You know, it's what we're seeing kind of in Lakeville, down by Spirit of Branch and Farms. They're closer together. Obviously, the developers feel like there's a market for them, probably not for everyone, but if they're selling, they're selling, you know, and it, to be honest, it's an unusually shaped lot. It's kind of tricky. I know developers generally want to make the most efficient use of their, their land.
And then with the max lot coverage from 40%, being 35% to 48%, I know we've had, we've run into some issues before when people have come in with these small yards and they want to put like a patio or something on. Are these houses going to have some of those constraints where, because they already have so much max? where, because they already have so much max lot coverage?
Well, yeah, I certainly think that they're going to have trouble if they're wanting to put in a swimming pool with a bunch of concrete. You know, that's the biggest issue. The developers generally allow for a certain amount of patio space off the back of the houses and include that in their submittal when they get their building permit, just so that it's at least there. You know, it's going to be tight.
But there isn't actually much room to do anything more, okay. Thank you.
But then again, also to note, decks do not count towards lot coverage, so.
Right, right. Just hard surface patio type. Okay. Are there any other questions for staff?
I had a couple. Actually, I'm too concerned about the actual PUD itself around there. So just to the east is a railroad crossing. Is that expected to be completed with signals?
Yeah, you know, working with the railroad's a long, burdensome process. The plan is for that to be finished off as a quiet zone. I don't know the exact timing on that, but it's in the railroad's hands. The city's done, you know, kind of our part in regards to that.
Do we know that it'll be done before, say, this development were to be added?
I, I can't say with certainty.
Okay. I'd say it's a going concern, because there's, there's a, it's, you know, it's sort of under construction and stop sign, and the stop sign's got paint on it, and so that'd be a concern.
Sure.
We may want to think about that one. The other one is, the kind of, the going concern has come up before, which is the intersection of Bonner and Three.
Mm-hmm.
And so this development isn't big. We keep on having developments added. We just approved another, the last phase of Caremore. We approved the earlier motion, this one. So we keep on adding traffic.
Right.
And so, and this has come up with residents and others, so the question would be, where are we in terms of current volume of traffic, particularly in relationship to hitting a threshold with the state that we could petition for, like there?
Sure, sure. So as of right now, the current volumes for both directions is averaging 54 cars per hour getting onto Highway Three from Bonner Path and 132nd. The threshold for that to, to even, to even meet one of the warrants, of which there's several, would be 150 cars per hour just from one of those. And the vast majority of turning movements are coming from Bonner Path, and MINDOT is really looking that those two legs are kind of equal. And so because to the west is really not going to develop any more than it already is with Dunmore finishing off soon, city's engineering staff is not thinking, is not projecting that we're ever going to meet the warrants based on volume alone. The good news is that the MINDOT is conducting a Highway Three corridor study that should be coming up in late '23, it should be completed, so not that soon, but they are in the middle of doing that study, and that would most likely include looking at that stretch between Conimera and McAndrews. There's a lot of things to consider that MINDOT would consider for that intersection. Mostly, it's, what do you call it? Continued traffic volumes versus just during the peak hours. Also looking for that even balance between the legs. Lastly, I do have more information that I can share with the commission just about the turning movements. The vast majority of movements that are coming, are going onto Highway Three are to, making right turns, so they're not really waiting to turn left as much during those peak hours. But traffics, a traffic analysis consultant would need to be hired in order to even put together what would be called a intersection control evaluation, and even with that analysis, which could be, you know, thousands of dollars, that doesn't guarantee that MINDOT would actually put a signal in there. So we've been discussing it. It's really kind of hard for us, when it's MINDOT's intersection, to really decide on.
I understand. Does that, does the volume take into account cars that funnel up Birchwood, you know, which we know that's been an issue? Is it taking into account the traffic that?
It's only looking at the intersection of Three and Forty, or, and Bonner.
So if you had 50 cars an hour going up Birchwood, that wouldn't be counted in your, okay.
So it'll be interesting to see what that corridor study says, to find out what their thoughts are on that. Just anecdotally, what I've heard from the engineers is traffic is like water, so like you said, going to Birchwood. I think a lot of the stuff that's happening around Akron and Bonner, if they're heading south, which is really the tricky movement if you're getting on Three, they're going to be going down to 42 and heading west. I don't necessarily know that those developments are adding to the traffic on Three. I would say that a lot of the traffic on Three is coming from downstream, like Farmington, Northfield, and their development. So that's not something that we can control either.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Reed, you know, one thing that the city council has recently been discussing is they are very aware of the traffic concerns that are often associated with increased development in this portion of Rosemont, and they have made it one of their priorities to continue study internally, within the city, not just within the MINDOT corridor, but to make sure that we don't get to a point where it's all of a sudden an issue that isn't able to be handled. So it's not the first time this has come up, certainly appreciate this issue continuing to be brought up, and I know the other thing that Anthony was going to mention too, is that we do have contacts with MINDOT that we commonly correspond with to make sure that all those, those things are addressed.
Thank you. So it's, it's good to hear. I just, I think that awareness and visibility and the fact that the city is monitoring it closely.
Yeah, it's certainly not, it doesn't go without notice, you know, it does come up, if not from the commission, from the public.
You talked about a lot of the right movement from Bonner. The other thing that I was thinking of is, as we get more development here, people turning left, you know, people going south on Highway Three and then turning left on Bonner. You know, just as we add more development, could we see backups, starting to back up there, where we get into that, where we start restricting that flow of traffic there?
Yeah, and that's something that would have to be resolved via extending the turn lane, you know, there is a turn lane there.
There's a turn lane there.
But it might not be as long enough as traffic numbers, you know, increase.
So maybe when the state's looking at that, hopefully that's something that they'll...
Yeah. We, we, we have a lot closer relationship with the county, just because we work with them for a lot of things, and then, you know, the state has their, Three is a very long highway versus, you know, a county road.
Yes, okay. Are there any other questions for staff on this item?
You have a question. I think there's a portion of Bonner Path that is currently unpaved, maybe just to the east of there. Are there plans to pave that, where Blaine Avenue could also be a sort of a route that people could take?
Sure, eventually, you know, that's, as development kind of occurs south of Blaine and at that intersection, and more traffic movements are heading that way, that's, that's certainly something that could be looked at. The county also has plans to extend Akron, if, if they can get Inver Grove Heights to kind of get on board a little bit more, but have Akron be another connection up to Cliff as somewhat of a reliever from Highway Three, eventually extending further south through Umore Park and, you know, reconnecting down there. So there are plans, a lot of those are, you know, long-term things, but, yeah, definitely any sort of, any way to kind of spread the flow of traffic could help.
And also, is the landscaping fence along the railroad, is that a requirement, or is that something the developer is choosing to do?
It's something that, the develop, it's not a requirement, it's something that staff recommended to the developer, and they felt that it was a good idea.
So with it not being a requirement, but being a recommendation from staff and the developer on board, is it part of the requirements now with the, with its approval or not?
I would say it's part of the planned unit development, and, you know, the planned unit development does have to work with the plans that are attached to the agreement.
Okay. So we would expect to see that, then?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? Thank you, Anthony. This item is a public hearing item, and so at this time, we will open up the public hearing for this item. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item this evening may do so by coming to the podium and stating your name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Madam Chair and members of the commission, my name is Dwayne Sikich, I represent Builders Lot Group in 9531 Seventy-Eighth Street in Prairie. We, reviewing the staff report, we have no issues with the 29 or so conditions of approval, so we plan to meet and/or comply with those, and our team is here, available for questions, including our civil engineer.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? I think we're good for now, but thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Haber, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The public hearing is now closed. Are there any final comments or questions from the commission?
Just the railroad crossing thing, and I don't know, Anthony or Adam, if there's anything, any follow-ups there or not? I mean, I don't think it's a huge safety issue, at least currently, but once we get more cars there, is, what are your recommendations on that?
Well, it's, it's in process. It's, the railroad is a slow, big, burdensome.
So it's been approved, it's just taking time?
Correct.
Oh, very good, okay, thank you.
Sorry.
It's not my railroad. The sidewalk out here by the railroad took years, so you know.
Maybe to add to that a little bit, because I'm, I'm on the board in Greystone Edition, and that is a significant concern for folks in that, in that development, that that thing, I bet you I hear once a week from somebody, when is that going to be done?
I think the biggest concern is...
And I, and I, and not to knock railroads, but, no, but, I mean, it's, that's the timing, and it's their timing, and, you know, they're working on it, so.
No, it's, it's, it's a signal crossing, so it's, as far as a safety feature, that's not too much of the issue, as much as the noise, and especially when you put a new development in there, you know, and people don't like to hear a train whistle that's mandatory at crossings, that they have to blow at three in the morning when the trains, both Canadian Pacific and Union Pacific run on the line, so it's a noise issue.
I think it is, you know, if you can see how long it took the sidewalk outside City Hall to get put in, you know, it is in process, though.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions on this item this evening? Seeing none, entertain, we've got three motions before us, we should take them separately.
The first one. Make a motion to recommend the city council approve the preliminary plat for Bray Hill, subject to the following conditions, lettered A through E.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Reed and seconded by Commissioner Rivera. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
A motion to recommend the city council approve the planned unit development, master development plan with rezoning of the property from AG Agricultural to R2 PUD, moderate-density residential planned unit development, subject to the following conditions, lettered A through Q.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Reed and seconded by Commissioner Schmiesek. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. And Commissioner Reed, one more.
All right, wrap it up. Motion to recommend the city council approve the final plat for Bray Hill, subject to the following conditions, lettered A through G.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Reed and seconded by Commissioner Haber. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. This item also will go forward to city council on April 19th. That concludes our public hearing section of the meeting this evening, and we will move forward to the discussion section.
Madam Chair, just want to remind the commission, they would have received an invite to the urban plan for public officials next Friday.
April 8th.
April 8th.
At the Rosemont Community Center banquet room.
That is correct.
Correct? Okay. And 8:00 AM is what our...
In time of 8:30.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll send out additional information for that here shortly.
Okay.
So we're finalizing the RSVPs between the city council, planning commission, then a few of the other commissions and other invited guests for the process.
Thank you. Any other discussion items?
Yeah, I, I just want to make one note, and I appreciate, Anthony, you mentioned, we were talking about the lot size. You mentioned the development, it's in Lakeville. I think it's 162nd, so just south of 46, east of Hy-Vee, I think that's the one you're referring to. And just, I just recommend, if the commissioners haven't driven over there, to take a look, there's a lot of much smaller footprint homes there, which are very attractive, I thought.
Alley-served garage, or alley-accessed garages and things like that.
That's right, I'm not one where I want to reach out and touch my neighbor, but, you know, these...
Prey to homes is happening right now.
These people are, they're selling, so, okay. Just a review of our upcoming schedule then, so Anthony and Adam touched on April 8th, the planning workshop. We also have our next meeting, regular meeting, April 26th. So Anthony did confirm today, we do not need our second, or our first, or second Tuesday of April for, April, so April 26th will be our next regular meeting, and then in May, same thing, we do not need that second Tuesday, so we'll meet May 24th. And then June 14th, we should continue to hold that for right now, and then June 28th. And so with that, any other discussion items?
We'll see you for three more years.
Okay, congratulations. And Commissioner Schmiesek, I would like to take just a moment and thank you for your service. I believe this is your last meeting with us this evening.
It is, I've, I've enjoyed it quite honestly, but I'm looking forward to maybe serving the community in some other form.
Well, we look forward to having you serve the community in other ways, and we've appreciated your input and your time on planning commission, so thank you.
You're welcome.
And Brenda, we look forward to having you join us for the next three years. Congratulations on your reappointment. And with that, I will adjourn the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, March 29th. Meeting adjourned.